The meeting to order, we're not going to have public comment because we don't really have a public, so we're not going to do that.
Oh, I don't know.
First on our agenda, it could have been at our last meeting, but it wasn't. The first meeting or first or second meeting within a month of the election, we have an opportunity to have an election for officers of the board, and we'll hold that now. So, nominations?
Or do you want to wait until Pam gets here to hold it?
Yeah.
Well, maybe we should.
I move that we take that out of order.
Yeah, I would second that because part of our policy is that we do it when everybody is present.
Yeah.
Oh, good policy. Okay, so, we have a motion, we have a second.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we'll place that last.
Okay.
Before committee reports.
Yeah.
Okay, and I hope I don't forget.
I'll make a note and I'll remind you.
All right. Paul, minutes?
Yeah, I recommend approval of the minutes of May 24th, 2022, as written.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
She's doing a good job on the minutes. Now we have a decision. The applicant is Susan Perkins on a site plan review application to construct an attached accessory apartment located at 41 Sidewinder Road. And, Bob, could you read that for us?
Okay. Draft, June 14th, 2022. Motion that the planning board votes to approve the application of Susan Perkins for the creation of a 544 square foot, one-bedroom accessory dwelling unit on the 0.67 acre lot located at 41 Sidewinder Road under Section 240-12.2 Site Plan Review of the zoning bylaw for a plan entitled Proposed ADU Scale 1/4 Inches = 1 Foot Prepared by Susan Perkins dated May 9th, 2022 along with the plot plan entitled Foundation Certification Plan in Falmouth, Massachusetts Prepared for Susan Perkins Scale 1 Inches = 50 Feet Prepared by Stephen J. Doyle and Associates dated September 11th, 2003. This was photos of the house garage and driveway areas with the following findings. The applicant Susan Perkins is seeking to create a 544 square foot, one-bedroom accessory apartment located in the existing basement at 41 Sidewinder Road. The 0.67 acre, 29,189 square foot property is located in the Agricultural A, AGA zoning district, the Coastal Pond, Great Pond overlay district, and the Water Resource Protection district. The law contains a 1,424 plus or minus square foot principal dwelling and is restricted to two bedrooms under Title V of the state environmental code unless an appropriate subsurface sewage disposal with enhanced nitrogen removal is provided. As proposed, the 544 square foot, one-bedroom accessory apartment at 38.2% of the total floor area of the principal structure provides the necessary parking, meets the minimum lot size requirement, and does not alter the architectural design of the structure. Therefore, the application satisfies the requirements set forth in Section 240-6.6 and Section 240-14.1E of the zoning bylaw. Further, the applicant will be maintaining the two-bedroom maximum on the property satisfying the restriction under Title V. The planning board's review does not include building code review, and the board refers to the building commissioner as to issues related to building code and zoning. The planning board finds that the information provided by the applicant conforms to all the requirements and findings pursuant to Section 240-6.6 of the zoning bylaw. The planning board considered the submitted referrals and the applicant's response in this matter, and the board will condition the decision accordingly. Conditions: One, the plan shall be constructed as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the planning board to determine if modification of this decision is necessary pursuant to Section 240-183B of the zoning bylaw. No permit for full or partial occupancy shall be issued until the planning board is satisfied that the conditions of this approval and predecessor approvals have been met. Two, either the principal dwelling or accessory apartment must be owner occupied for a period of seven months in every calendar year or owned by a nonprofit organization or government authority whose purpose is to provide affordable housing. An affidavit shall be submitted annually to the building committee commissioner, signed by the property owner, attesting that the principal dwelling or accessory apartment has been owner occupied for a period of seven months and not otherwise rented as set forth above. Three, either the principal dwelling or accessory apartment may be rented, but not both. During the five months, the owner occupant may be absent. Rental periods shall be no less than six months, and weekly, monthly rentals, summer rentals, so-called, are expressly prohibited. Neither the principal dwelling nor accessory apartment shall be used as commercial accommodations at any time. Four, the project shall not direct any stormwater runoff to public property about its or public rights away, and shall meet all applicable standards set forth in the building code as determined by the building commissioner. Five, upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for this residence per Section 99-1. A fixing of legible numbers require time limit for compliance. This is applicable to both the residence and the accessory apartment. Signage directions will be provided when the engineering division assigns the address.
Second.
Thank you. We have heard the motion, and it's been seconded. Is there any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's approved. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda, Conservation Group Incorporated, Green Seal Environmental, LSE, continued. A site plan review application to reconfigure existing parking areas and access driveways to be paved and striped in compliance with the bylaw located at 81 Technology Park Drive. Jed, is there anything you want to say before we hear from the applicant?
Not at this time. I'll reserve my comments until after their presentation.
Okay, great. Could you please?
Good afternoon. Jose Picharo from Green Seal Environmental. We have been, since I was last here, we have been in constant communication and coordination with the planning department as well as the DPW department in an effort to address all their comments and present a plan that incorporate everything. Essentially, what you're going to see tonight, it's the same design concept with very minor changes that we had to do to accommodate that, and those plans were revised twice to incorporate the series of reports that we worked through. I'm going to run through what did we change the existing conditions plan. As you can see here, that did not change anything. Right here, you can see where the existing driveway is. This is the existing building, and this is the gravel parking area that exists. This right here is the existing emergency access drive. So that's what's important from the existing conditions plan, and again, nothing changed since we were here. So now we go to the site plan. This is going to be now the new emergency access road for the fire truck, and we're going to swap that. This now, what was the emergency access, is now going to be the main access to the building and parking area. We, right here, have the paved surface with the parking striping. The total parking space is going to be 81, which is what the lease company need is 80. We ended up providing 81. It's a way, we fixed all the calculations based on the way planning department wanted to see it, and we are providing more parking than what is required. And we also talked about that. Also, on the last meeting, we had an oversized main entrance for 40 feet, and we talked about that. You guys were okay with leaving that wide, but based on the comments that DPW had, we did make the required width because if we left it at 40 feet wide like we had it, we were going to have to provide more drainage to address some of the other comments they had. So we did make it. Now it meets regulations. In addition to that, DPW required that we apply for a Kerco permit, and we did so. We prepared the filing, provided a bond that was required for $4,200. So that is all taken care of in file, and good to go on that end. Then if we move forward to the drainage and grading plan, it's essentially the same. We did have to add an additional catchment based on his request, DPW engineer request, and a catchment point before the right of way. So those are where the only changes, and very minor grading within the parking areas to make it comply with the slope requirements. So nothing really important changed there. Just added some additional information like inverse labels and stuff like that that they requested, basically for clarification. The erosion control plan there, there were no comments to it other than adding the DPW standard notes that we added, and those are also incorporated to the Kerco permit plan as well. And this is the new plan we had to add. I believe that was the main reason why we continued the hearing the last time was for the landscaping. Planning wanted to see the locations of the landscaping areas on a separate plan, and we provided that. The light grade hatching, it's where those landscaping areas are, and landscaping wall to midgrading, and on green symbols are the location of the proposed plantings. The only comment we had from DPW on this was that these two trees in here, we had on the initial submission inside the right of way. So that would require additional permitting, so based on coordination and communications, we decided to pull those back inside the lot. And I believe that was the only comment on that plan. Then we have construction standard details. There were no, nothing really relevant on those. Fire apparatus radius, we added their request. They wanted to see what vehicle did we use, and so we added that to the plan, and those were provided by the fire department. And basically, that is it. This incorporated all of the comments that we had prior to last Friday's report. That report, which I assume we're going to talk about, clears all of the pending items, but it does leave a few for your consideration. So what I get, no changes were done for that because I only had one business day toward it, and we just couldn't do any changes. And I don't think he's requiring any changes to it either. So if you guys have any questions or additional clarification, I'll be happy to assist.
Thank you. Jed, you said you had some comments now?
Yeah. In summary, we think it's a really good plan set. We've met several times with the applicant and the engineering division to go over all the comments. Included in your packet is the latest engineering review. Their new format, as you may have noticed, is green for good, yellow for deferred, and red for stop, right? So the good news is there's no red. There's minor yellows, which I'll highlight in a second.
Is this because you doubt our reading ability, or?
No. The engineering division is just trying a new format, so it'll call your attention to the outstanding items.
I think we like it.
I do. Yeah, I do. It really helps.
So it makes it clear that they've done a good job, and that...
You're going to sneak something by, you put it in the green.
It would be difficult.
You have to really look at the greens.
Yeah.
Okay. So you think there are...
Two items that are in yellow that I think maybe you just want to discuss tonight. The first is the emergency access swap. The comments from both the planning department plus the engineering division were to basically add signage to that northern driveway to indicate that that's an emergency access only, and so the applicant is seeking your approval for that use. And you can see it up on the screen here. There's two signs that will face the street, which will indicate emergency access only. The applicant has also indicated that the employees will be instructed to use the southern driveway at all times.
Uh huh.
And so that's the first topic. And then the second one is just to make mention of the fact I ran the truck turning templates past the fire department this morning just to make sure that they were on board, they have no issues with the plans that's drawn. So those are my two comments.
And they can be taken care of with conditions? Right, okay.
Nothing major, in my opinion.
Discussion. Paul?
I just have a question. I'm familiar with this property, and the main way to get into the property was Research Road coming straight up the hill. Now you call that an auxiliary entrance and have to turn right and come in another area in another way. I think it's a very good idea to have that secondary entrance, but I'm curious why the northern one is called the emergency one, and the southern one, the new one, is going to be the primary entrance.
Uh huh.
People are going to just go straight up the hill.
So this is what the fire department has been using for many years. That's what they are trained to use, and it's the one that actually makes the turn. So that's the primary... They would not be accessed, the maneuver that we proposed and they have set, they would not be using the main entrance to, in case of an emergency. They will use what they have been using for many years, and that's how it works. That's why we are calling it emergency access.
Can I answer your question? Pat?
Well, I have the same concerns, that people would automatically want to go in there. And in addition, just instead of emergency entrance, what if we put it emergency apparatus entrance? Makes it very clear, I think, because emergency entrance, people are saying, okay, fine, I'm going to use it anyway, but if you have it labeled emergency apparatus. I don't know whether the board thinks that's a good idea or not, but I'm still concerned about people just generally using it because of the "there it is."
Yes, or even fire emergency.
Yeah.
We could do that.
What is the harm if they do?
There is no harm if they do, but that will become the main entrance because it's right there at the end of Research Road.
And additionally, I would like to add, it's mainly the same person are going to be coming in here every day. Okay? And their easier access to the parking is absolutely the second because they would not have to go around, up, and down.
I understand that.
And only, it would be an issue for, like, let's say, a delivery truck that comes in once a month, it's a new driver, maybe.
Okay.
We'll make an attempt to use that one.
I think most people are going to drive until they see a building anyways, so they'd be driving down to that bottom entrance.
Yeah. But we can definitely make the signs to say what you're saying, the suggestion.
I just, I don't know. I just threw it out to try to keep people from using that as a main entrance. As Charlotte said, there's no real harm in doing that.
Because it makes an awfully big sign to add a long word like that. Isn't most of the traffic, people coming to work, parking, and then leaving later in the day?
Mary?
What kind of traffic is there here?
Only employees.
Right, and they come...
For the most part. Like I said, you will have maybe a delivery truck for supplies, office supplies and stuff like that, as, you know, every two weeks, every month, something like that.
But it's people really familiar with the location, with the building, with the parking, with the everything?
Uh huh. Unless the use changes over the years.
That's true.
And by the way, they have, I believe the lease is for close to 30 years, so...
Okay.
They're planning to be there.
So there's a good chance that the use is not going to change.
Okay. Then I'll withdraw my...
My name's Roy Carignano. I'm part of the applicant team from Conserv with the architect. I think we'd prefer it, along with your suggestion. I think the idea of restricting this is really a little harmful, and I can't imagine why you would say to us, the fire department would say, "Emergency exit only." It seems as if that would discourage somebody from driving, and I think, you know, the building has a lot of traffic, a lot of people, and why would there be a reason to restrict it? So I would hope that the board would agree with your opinion and allow us to change it to emergency apparatus if that's okay with the fire department.
Oh, you like that suggestion.
I don't know the genesis of this. Why would they want this? I can't even imagine. I think you're perfectly on point.
Okay.
I can't imagine. Do you follow us? I think it would be awfully difficult to sort of imply that those two driveways now are only one.
Hmm.
I think that's just sort of unfair. I mean, it's two driveways. Why wouldn't you let people use them as they have been for 20 years? And I think the implication of the note is emergency only. I think people would be hesitant to do it, so I hope you'll adopt Patricia's suggestion. That would be our vote.
So you're directing then, any emergency fire or rescue apparatus, use this?
I suspect that's for the benefit of the fire department, that they would not make a mistake, I guess, and put their apparatus too close to the building. I don't know.
And that is what they have been using for years, so that's not a change for them.
Yeah. It's related to the fact that the property's only allowed one primary driveway, and so that because they have two, one of them is designated as emergency access only, and the other one is the actual driveway for the property.
So it's to explain.
Exactly.
To anyone who wants to know, it's to explain why they were allowed to have two.
This is for...
But the wording on the sign isn't really going to clarify that point. So we just want whatever you want on the sign.
Yep. That would be appreciated.
Any other comments, questions?
Lot of engineering on this.
Right. Yeah, I want to thank you for working so closely with the planning department and getting all of the issues resolved before you got here. That's how we really hope everything will work. If we could request a positive motion for our next meeting?
Certainly.
And that will do it. Is your all set? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much all for your time.
Thank you.
By the way, this is very nice. I like this setup a lot, which every town had one like this.
Could I ask a question just procedurally, Jed? It's, our typical trajectory would be to come to the planning board, seek your approval, which I hope you'll gain, and then may we begin work?
Yes. Yep.
Will you be supervising us? Who will you supervise us?
It will be the planning department, yep.
Oh, great. So we would call your department for inspections and that?
Yes, sir.
Do you want to set up some kind of a protocol by which we would, when we would call you?
Yeah, we can talk offline.
Okay, great. Thank you. We want to call you at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Good night. Okay, next on our agenda, the applicant, Nato Fulte, has been continued, and I believe they've withdrawn. Is that right? They've asked you...
No, they're just asking for a continuance to the next meeting, which is June 28th.
I've got the letter here. Okay, I move that we accept the request from Kathy Pulidi dated June 10th, that there, for continuance of our public hearing for 797 Main Street special permit from June 14th to June 28th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that brings us to our final piece of business, which is the planning board reorganization.
Didn't skip it.
Yeah. Where we can elect new officers. So we'll have nominations first for chair.
I would be very appreciative if Charlotte would accept the nomination for a second year as chair.
I would accept. Are there other nominations? Dom?
I think you've been an excellent chairperson, and, but in my time here, the chairperson's been limited to two years of service, and I think you've been here for two years as a chairperson. No? One year?
It must seem awfully long to you, Jim thought that also.
You've been doing such a great job.
I don't know. We've been trying to make shorter meetings to keep Jim happy, but it's, you know, not always possible. No, just one year.
Okay.
That's okay?
Yes, thank you.
And I move to keep Paul as recording secretary.
Second.
Second. So then, we have two nominations to continue the current officers as they are. We need a vice chair. Are there nominations?
Who's vice chair now?
Jim is current boss chair.
Yes.
I think somebody else should take it. Actually, Pat, you've been actually acting more like vice chair anyway.
Are you nominating Pat?
I just didn't...
Don't you want to do it?
No, I don't.
Apparently not.
I guess not. All right, well, okay.
I mean, it seems like you are vice chair.
Oh, I'm not.
Well, that's great.
It's just historical memory that butts in sometimes, so, yeah, I'll be happy to accept it.
So with those three nominations, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
And that's where we are. Committee reports.
Did you have to nominate a clerk?
We did. We nominated you.
We nominated you.
And you didn't say you wouldn't do it.
Lose, you lose, Paul.
Surely you're accepting. Yes, thank you.
I try to get out of all these things, and it doesn't work.
That is correct. Any committee reports?
We have, it's the end of the month. They're back.
Can I ask you a question?
Just not familiar with your process, it does seem to imply that you're not going to vote this evening.
Correct.
And you're not going to vote this until the 28th. Is that correct? Is that your normal...
Sorry, I thought that we were clear about that. Yes, we have requested a positive motion, so you know that we're, that's what we're going to look at.
Yeah.
It's a decision that Jed has prepared, and we will vote on accepting it on the 28th.
Okay. I'm just asking, curious, is that your normal procedure? Because we've been on the docket now since March 31st, and we're losing good time, and the client would like to move in, and so I guess your point that I can start doesn't mean I can start.
Yeah, it didn't mean immediately.
Yeah.
But yes, that's the normal procedure.
Not possible to vote this evening? You have to wait for another?
Yeah, we have to have the motion drawn up and voted on.
I see. Okay. Well, that's what it is. Thank you. Okay.
Pam, did you want to say anything about affordable housing? It came up before the select board last night.
Right. This was a pre-planned joint meeting between the Board of Selectmen and the Affordable Housing Committee, and we basically spoke about the two propositions that Laura Moynihan had presented, and the board seemed very favorable. Paul was at that meeting. It was nice to see them sort of agree and not sort of punch holes in what was presented. So I think they're going to move ahead with letting the two programs, they're not voting to approve the two programs, they're just letting it, you know, get out there to the public and moving ahead on it. And I can't quite figure out whether they're going to take any real action on it right now, or they're going to do some more investigating into it. What did you get from that?
Well, I think they've directed the staff to investigate further, to try and figure out the nuts and bolts of each program and whether or not the Affordable Housing Fund can, you know, accommodate those programs.
It's not cheap. So if somebody were to apply, it's $250, $250,000. If someone were to put down, you know, I didn't bring, I should have, but I didn't bring the details of the program, but we're going to be hearing more about it, and I think there's, there are other programs out there that might be even better. I mean, I think what happens is you hear about programs from another community, and then you think, oh, this is terrific. And then there are some other programs, and I don't personally think that we have to stick just with these two possible programs. I'm not very articulate tonight, but...
Was there any discussion, Pam, about focusing whatever money is going to be used, either for helping people with the down payment or to meet the other closing costs or whatever, to focus that on multifamily housing and on rental housing rather than on closing costs not? I mean, it seems as if they're drifting away, if they ever did, pay attention to the local comprehensive plan and the housing production plan. I don't see why there's such an emphasis on single... I don't see why there's such an emphasis on single-family housing.
Well, I mean, this obviously is a, I have to be very careful how I phrase this, but I don't personally agree that it should be single-family homes because that was not part of the production plan, housing production plan. It was for multifamily dwellings, rentals. The statement that was made last night by Laura was that this was part of the housing plan. And it is not part of the housing plan. And her belief that we need to provide single-family homes for these people. I mean, I think that's, to me, when people move, I don't care whether they want, that's not what I meant. I think to have a place to live so you don't have to commute a huge distance to get here and a workforce that can live where they work is very, very important, more important than living in a single-family home immediately. You know, I think there are steps that most young families choose. And so that's, I think there are going to be differing opinions as to the chronology of, do you jump right into a single-family house and get a reduction, or you get money towards your down payment, you get money toward other things that you need to do?
I can't see the town spending, you know, public officials of the town spending their time trying to design people's approach to housing. Individuals will do that. The town's approach to housing is in the housing production plan.
That's what it should be.
That's... John, you've been very close to this. What do you think?
I don't have the housing production plan in front of me, but I'm sure it included single-family homes for affordable purchase. And I'm sure, I know that this town wants apartments more than single-family homes, but if you're a family, you don't want to live in an apartment, you want to live in a house. And if you can get a house that's affordable, why not? I mean, Bob's involved with Habitat for Humanity, and they're all single-family homes, and I'm sure all the people who live there live there forever, don't they, Bob?
Very much, yeah.
Or a very long time.
Yeah.
So this, this community needs both.
Yeah.
And I don't mean to interrupt, but, but my sense of it has been for a long time that this community wants rentals. Part of the reason is all rentals count toward the 10% SHI. If you do 40B development, housing development, and there's 12 houses, three of them are affordable, nine of them are market rate, and it gets, doesn't get us any closer to the 10%. The 10% has been a very important part of the, of the fabric of this community for a long time. And we're about 6%, 7%, I think. But apartments are the fastest way to get to 10%. You'll never get there without a single-family homes. So my sense has been, that's been part of the reason why there's been such a push for apartments.
I agree with you.
Rentals. I almost say apartment, I said, let's say rentals.
Rental units, right.
And the other piece to the rentals is, 40 years ago when I arrived here, you could rent a house, a year-round house, and have three or four roommates in there. But that isn't the case now. So a single person coming here for, say, a teaching job or fire, police or something, you want to get a one-bedroom apartment, or if you're a couple, maybe a two-bedroom apartment or whatever. So you can rent someplace, get a feel for the area, as opposed to just coming here blind and maybe commuting from some distance into town until you find a house to live in. It's nice to have rentals. When I moved to Tampa, we rented an apartment in a big, in a big complex. And then I left, but my buddy stayed, and he bought a house later on. So the rentals are important for, I think, newer people coming here who aren't a family that want to get established.
And actually, there's, there's one more thing, that the studies have shown that people don't necessarily, today, the young families don't want a house. You know, they want to come in, similar to what Bob said, get the lay of the land, and then make a decision as to, do they want a house? Do they want to stay here? So I, I think we need a mix, but I think there should be a preponderance of rentals as opposed to single-family. And the, the cost for these programs, $250,000 for a family, when that could be spread out to help more than one family for assistance.
The housing production plan did not say we don't need any more single-family residences, but it said we have too many in the ratio. We needed smaller, less expensive rentals. The huge need was for rentals. Fine, if there are houses for rent, but we needed rentals.
Jim, did you have a thought on this?
Well, I guess to the comment, I'm involved in a 40B in the Kendall Lane, and there are people that are lottery winners are getting one hell of a house. We're selling the single-family homes for $1 million, and they're buying for 250.
It's remarkable.
It's, it's just an amazing thing. So those seven people are going to be very, very happy.
Explain then to you that the market, the private market is taken care of, providing options for ownership.
Well, no, I...
Of single-family houses. This is a conversation about a use of public money, and there's two kinds of public money. The new money they're talking about may be funneling into it, and Community Preservation Act money, which is already public money. And should the public be spending its money according to what it planned?
They are on the other 40Bs. The 40B I'm involved in, the town didn't participate at all. You know, it's done all by private money. And it was opposed by a lot of people, but the state makes some, gets them to do anyway if you keep trying. But the town gives money for many of the developers. I believe, if you take a look at the McGanza Crossing project, take a look at the public money that's gone into that. It's a huge amount of money per unit, where they're...
$65,000, isn't it?
What? It's huge. I don't know, it's, it's, it's really big money. I mean, where is the, Kendall Lane's entirely privately funded, so. I, I thought, in my opinion, the public money should go to apartments. That's where they need, that's where we need most. And apartments, I think for our planning, that the housing we need needs to be on public transportation routes and, and areas where there's sewer. And for all those reasons, the density, you know, my whole thing isn't, is, we don't really pay attention to some of the things, but the density is really, really important for the numbers to work. It only works, I think, when you have public transportation and sewers in the area. And I don't see how we can, if you give money to single-family homes, that's going to push it out in the suburb, further and further away from the core. And not within our local comprehensive plan, at least when I was involved with looking at it. But it seems the funding for projects way outside, well north of 28, have, are the ones that get all the money from the town so that they can build, build them there because they, they wouldn't work financially if they didn't have the money. So the town's actually providing incentive to build out there. And to me, that's sprawl. So it's, it's like, it's counterintuitive to what I thought was the town's planning for building in the core. But the selectmen and other boards have seemed fit to approve these things and pay for them and, and use town money for them, so that's their choice.
John?
So just to clarify, for Jim's bringing up like McGanza Crossing in North Falmouth, so, as you know, I'm your representative to CPC. And then CPC's representative to Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, where we take applicants for the public money, and we vet the applications, we pass it forward to CPC for approval or not approval, then it goes to the selectmen, and they're the final decision-makers. So we have, we have been purchasing deed restrictions for $100,000 a unit. And that's the program. For, for a long time, this money was only given to nonprofits for rentals, to help them build, build the apartments that we need in this town. So we, we started having some for-profit developers come and talk to us and say, we can build apartments, but we can't afford to do it because of the restrictions from the state for a 40B for apartments. It's not, it's not profitable. So we decided to offer $100,000 a unit for every additional deed restricted unit. So McGanza Crossing, there's 10 apartments there. Three of them would, would have been market, market, or three of them would have been affordable, seven would have been market rate. They asked us if we would contribute money to make the seven market-rate ones deed restricted to affordable in perpetuity. So our committee vetted it. We said yes, we'll do $650,000, which is less than $100,000 a unit. And it went to the CPC, they agreed, and went to the selectmen, they agreed. So for $650,000, the town got seven affordable units built and deed restricted as affordable rentals forever. We can't, we can't buy the land and build a rental unit for $100,000. No one can do that.
Well, could I comment on that, John? Because it seems to me that that is the appropriate use of that money.
And that's what we thought. And we also did the same thing for the gentleman on Brick Hill Road, Brick Hill Place, wherever it's called. He, he had permission to do, through a 40B, 20 rentals. Five of them were going to be affordable, 15 market rate. Same thing, he just could not make the numbers work. Came to our committee, and we, we offered $65,000 a unit at that time. So for, I think, $950,000, this town got 15 apartments built and rented and deed restricted as affordable forever. We're talking 100 years from now, still going to be deed restricted, still going to be affordable. It's, it's a great investment, and, and this is my personal opinion, it's a great investment of our funding to get more affordable units built in this town.
I, I, I agree. And it does get, and they do get built. But they're, they're not getting built where I thought we were supposed to be building them. They're getting built in these areas that are harder because we're finding ways to fund them with our money. And if the goal, it's kind of like, well, we really don't need to build in the village cores. What's more important is housing anywhere we can get it, and then that's why we're doing it.
So, so we would like to do that. All of us would love to have it on the sewer. But now we have a new bylaw that got passed that allows developers to do up to 20 units per acre and on the sewer.
And isn't it true that that's the first time we've got a bylaw that actually does encourage building only in the core?
And that, and that density...
Because before, we might have thought it, but we didn't have a bylaw.
That density will allow the developer to buy the land, put up the structures, and rent them without any public funding. So the town of Falmouth's contribution to that is the density, not the money.
Well, but John, have you heard as part of the conversation for the new, two new proposed programs, that, that the money be used for things that accord with the housing production plan? That they would, that they would tend toward rentals, they would be affordable, they would be affordable, but that, but that they would tend toward rentals because that's what we need?
Well, I haven't, I did not see the, I didn't watch the selectmen's meeting last night. I'm not aware of what you guys are discussing.
Ah.
I haven't read it in the paper, and I haven't seen, I haven't seen the meeting last evening.
Aren't we going a little far afield right now?
We are.
Because it was a...
This is a committee report, sorry.
Committee report.
Multiple committee reports.
Wait, all right. Bob tried.
Can I add a comment, please? You know, one of the things we're talking about with this affordable housing is always land. There's no land available. And there's a lot of affordable housing projects scattered throughout the town. And look at Scranton Avenue, there's three right in a row there. And last couple of weeks, there's been a lot of criticism about one of the operations there. I don't know what the issues are, I don't want to get into that. But my understanding is a lot of empty units in that building. Is there any effort to try to look at upgrading it, improving these areas, or maybe even expanding? Is money available to expand some of these areas where you do have affordable housing? Not that you want to have an entire affordable housing area in one spot, but the land is a big issue. And is money available to do some of the things like that? I mean, if we have unoccupied units because they need some maintenance, that doesn't make any sense.
A lot of them need a lot of maintenance.
You know, and even taking that one step further, my understanding, the sewer line is across the street, and they're not connected. The sewer line was built to serve the flying bridge, and it's a private line. Well, if the town took over that line, all these units can tie in, and then be ability to even expand in some of those areas. So I think we might want to look at something like that as well. Because I don't see any effort to do that anywhere.
I think if we want our, you know, thoughts on this, on to impact what's going to happen, we should attend other meetings perhaps, but not this one tonight.
Sorry.
No, that's okay, because I agree with you.
Sorry.
But we've been brought up short, Bob has reminded us, so. Never mind. Are there any other committee reports, announcements?
I have an announcement. Unfortunately, as you probably know, Paul Glenn passed away last week. The wake is going to be on Sunday. And he was very active in town. I think he was the chair of the Community Preservation Committee.
Yes.
He still is, isn't he?
He still was, that's correct.
So I think he was a good man in town. He wasn't that old, by my standards, anyway. And I think it's a loss as well. I'd just like to acknowledge that, in case you didn't know that.
It's good to be reminded, it is a loss. Jed?
Did you want to provide a recodification working group meeting, or announcement, or committee report?
Yeah, I think perhaps just a little update. Pat and I are continuing on, on the second phase of recodification. We've had a meeting. It's a slog, and we, that's the full report, but we're, we're working on it, and we're hoping that, that we will have...
Jed being involved too when she says it's a slog.
And Michaela, who is doing all of the, the staff work to prepare for these meetings, which is terrific. We're hoping that we're going to have the low-hanging fruit to bring to the board, to the town meeting in November. And at times, it looks as if we'll make it, and at other times, it looks like we might not. So we'll see. So that's where we are on recodification. And I think you were going to talk about Union Square and how we're doing.
Yeah, Davis Straits, the Form 8 code. I have a meeting with consultants this Thursday to go over some of the final, the final version of the bylaw with all the edits that you folks provided, but also to look over the final graphics. So I'm very much looking forward to that. And we'll be bringing back a report to you folks at your next meeting. But our contract with Union Studios expires by the end of this month, so whatever sort of final edits they've come up with and final plan, it has to happen quickly.
Well, it's the graphics we've all been waiting for.
That's right.
So that's, that's really something to look forward to. We didn't see any general correspondence.
None in the file.
Uh-huh.
I was going to have another announcement, I know you went past it.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
As you know, I've been involved with Falmouth Station for some time. And the 150th anniversary of the arrival of train to Falmouth and the Falmouth Station is next month. So I wrote a letter to the chair of the select board suggesting that they write a proclamation. And in the inevitable fashion, they said, why don't you write it? Which I did. And select board approved a proclamation last night acknowledging the 150th anniversary of the Falmouth Station. This morning, I went to EDIC meeting, and I talked to them about this as well. I encouraged them to have a celebration like they did five years ago with the reopening of the Falmouth Station. And that was a big hit. A lot of people came. And I was suggesting that they go do something at this time. And there were letters from Tom Cahill and from, Ed Hadad from the Historical Commission encouraging EDIC to do that. So I think you're going to move forward with that, but it is July 18th. And they said, well, we don't have a lot of time. So I sat down this afternoon and, and wrote invitations, a list of people and an outline to kind of say, if you want to use this, go right ahead. But I'm hoping to move forward with some kind of event on the 18th.
And it would be the select board that would, oh, EDIC would do the...
And it would be the select board that would, or EDIC would do the event?
Well, it's an, EDIC is the leaseholder of the station, so they're the ones that have to do it. But being an election year and having maybe some people from Boston coming down, the select board would probably want to be involved as well. So Bill Huff asked me to write in the article, and I dropped it off this afternoon, whether they'll publish it Monday, Friday or not, I don't know. But I think it's a big event, and I think people should really support it.
I hope the planning board was on your invitation list. Thank you, Paul, for doing all that.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, the list I put, I didn't put the planning board down. I put everybody else down, that's a good thought.
I have a quick announcement, I thought I'd, because Paul brought up an idea. I've been working on something that's, Pat actually gave me this idea, and I've been expanding on it, and about taking, having this outdoor art display in Falmouth, running from, from the, all the way from the town green, all the way to Shore Street. And I've had a meeting with the town manager and talked to him about structure on it, and he's basically said, keep going, you're going in the right direction. And I've had one meeting with the Village Association, because they, they need, it needs to be a nonprofit. They want to be clear, because I run a gallery, I want, I don't want people to think it's my art that's going out there. And I've also teamed up with Arts Alive, and I'm trying to put together a, a team, and if I can get the, the Village Association to give the go, and the town to say, go, we're going to have it, well, then we're going to start recruiting artists. But I got to get, secure a date first before I can invite artists. And it would be basically for two months, because the artists that I know say, look at, I'm not going to move all my stuff for a week. It's, you know, it's a huge amount of money to move it and everything. So we're trying to do like September, October, October, November, tying in with the Jazz Festival at the same time, because the same, Arts Alive is involved with that. And so they've, I'm going to be working on both those things and kind of just focusing on that. I'll know in about two weeks whether it's going to happen or not, or at least whether I'm going to try. Because if I don't get the approval from the Village Association or approval from the town, I'm not going to...
Not going to do it.
I can't do it.
Well, what, what a great idea. How would, how would you provide for two-dimensional art outdoors?
We wouldn't.
Oh, so it's all sculptures?
It has to be, it has to be outdoor art, basically. Art that's meant to be outdoors. But if you take a look, there's a strip of land in front of 352 Main Street, which I happen to manage the building, so I'm really familiar with it. It's on, it's town property, it's, and it's, you have room for 10 sculptures along the strip of land by, by the library. And then if you walk up Main Street from the, from the library, every 200 feet, there's a, there's a patch of land with nothing on it. You know what I mean? It's not in the sidewalk. There, there's places where we could have 20 pieces, and then there's also the, the right out here, a little park that would be...
And the park here, right.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be fantastic, and it's a way to do it. I don't know if I can reach out and find enough art, but you know, it's, it really could be hard. But anyways, I've got to get the date approved by the town and the civic, the Village Association approved going forward, and if that happens, then I'm going to have a huge project.
Oh, I hope it happens. It's a wonderful idea.
Long gnomes and some pink flamingos.
No, but we, we, we would probably go to maybe the schools and say, do you want to work on a project? And try to make it an all-town event, and bring people, the goal would be to bring, have a big project, have hundreds of people come see it.
Right.
You know, in, in the shoulder season, and that's, so it's a business idea primarily. I will, the art would be for sale, I would not be selling it. It would, any, any, anyone buys it, the, would, all the monies would go to the nonprofits, which would be two people involved, would be Arts Alive and the Village Association. And I would just be the person behind the scenes pushing.
Good luck.
But it was actually, Pat had the idea one time.
Well, yeah, but Jim had the idea to put it out in front of his building there too, and I thought...
Then you said, well, why don't you extend it?
Wouldn't it be fabulous if it could be extended?
Yeah.
It'd be an attraction for the town.
I did put it on the street, but then you're the one to make, go to, go for town property.
Yeah, it'd be a real attraction for the town, I thought.
Well, certainly the sculptures that are now outside your gallery and eight cousins are terrific.
I posted something on Facebook today, if you've got to take a look at it, a family sent it to me over the weekend, that got the mother standing in front of the, the statue of, our mother holding the baby up in the air, called the Bond, has the father swinging a kid, swinging Jenny, another kid on the ground like the other one. They had mirrored the, things with their, and they wrote me a letter and sent a picture. We were really inspired to do this by your art, and I, I posted it on Facebook today, saying, what, art imitates life?
If I remember, you had pushed back.
Oh, yeah.
You had pushback when you're putting art on me.
Well, the, the select board tried to make me take it down, which I really wish they did again. Because I got two front-page articles, and more notice about it's the best thing that could ever happen to me. I have to, I have to thank them every time I get a chance, how much publicity they gave me on that one.
Well, that must be why Ed had that now. He's really intent on raising enough money to buy the reader, your sculpture, to put up at the West Falmouth Library.
It's so funny, he's become my best friend through all that, all that process. Here's, his board was the board given in charge to make, to take it down, and they turned out to be my biggest supporters.
All right, okay. Good luck with that, I hope it happens.
Thank you, I'll tell you a couple weeks.
Can I ask a question on that? You said people don't want to move their things here for a short period of time. What timeframe are you talking about?
Two months.
Two months?
They, no, some people said, well, why don't you only do it for a weekend or a month? And I, I, the artists, I'm getting to know a lot of artists now, and they said, you know, it's really hard to move them. We have to take them, they, these things get scheduled on in advance, they have to put them on a truck, and this case coming over from Martha's Vineyard or from all the other areas. It takes time to install them, it's just a lot of work, so they, they want to have them out there for a while.
So you're talking about a two-month timeframe?
Two-month timeframe.
Not 30 days?
No.
September, October.
Two months, and, and probably the highlight of it would be around the Jazz Festival at the same time. So the people could walk up and down the street, enjoy jazz at different places, and stopping by the art at the same time.
Soon it will be like Nora's. So are there any future agenda items on your mind?
I have two announcements, if, if I may. So I just want to remind everyone that Kim Fish is planning on attending our next planning board meeting. So that might be a good opportunity to have a discussion about affordable housing. So that's announcement number one.
Next time, 28th?
Kim Fish, our, yep, our new housing coordinator, I should make that clear. And then we are going to be starting our interviews for the Assistant Town Planner position next week.
Next, oh, okay.
Yep, so I'm very excited to, to announce that that process will be getting going in earnest at the middle of next week.
Have we many applicants?
We had three applicants. So it'll be a short process, but it'll be a good one.
Is anyone from this board going to be on the committee?
No.
Is that typical?
Yeah, for department heads, that's usually when you would participate. For support staff, it's, it's, my understanding, that's not the process.
It's the department head that, right, does that.
Yep.
Right.
Glitz and glamour for that, for that alone.
Well, good luck with that. Our next meeting, June 28?
Yep, move to adjourn.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Seven thirty, great.